And welcome to the Wairika City Council meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Please silence your cell phones. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting except for to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. And please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Is there anyone with comments other than items on the agenda? Don?
Yes.
Hi, Don.
Hi, I'm Don Hall, Wairika, California. This has nothing to do with any official, serious city business.
Oh.
But I come to you hat in hand
Uh-oh.
because Matt granted me the opportunity to be an official Wairika City representative unofficially
Officially and unofficially?
On my last trip to Europe. And one of the places that we went to was Berlin.
Oh, I've been there.
Spent a week in Berlin. And one of the places in Berlin we went to was the Berlin Wall. And so I wanted to share, I already gave Matt his. I didn't give him, can I approach?
Matt, of course you may. I've been there, Don, but I was there before the wall came down.
Yeah, well, parts of it are still up. It's just being in front of you.
Picture. And there you are. Right in front of what's left of the wall. Amazing. And Rob will be getting our hat.
We'll share one after Rob.
And our City of Wairika hat, alright. Thank you for being our emissary.
Yeah, well, you know, people have a really hard time pronouncing it.
Oh, I'm sure it's, yeah.
What, Wai- Uriga? I suppose not.
Close, yeah.
But I just wanted to point out that I'm standing in front of what at the time was and still is a major public works project. Twice. It was first a public works project when it was built and then it was a public works project when it was taken down. So not all public works projects are permanent. I understand that. Just, I picture that with you.
Nice. That is great, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
But that just proves that even though you didn't know where I was, I was thinking about you.
Thank you, and thank you for the souvenir and for representing us so well.
Oh, I tried to look good.
Norm has a question.
Well, just for information, when I was on the Mountain View City Council from eighty-six to ninety-five, a small piece of the Berlin Wall was put up in Mountain View.
Really?
A small section of it, it was really neat. It had graffiti on it and everything.
One of the more fascinating pieces of graffiti, some of which is gorgeous. I mean, it's true art, it's beautiful stuff they've done on it, was the graffiti from nineteen forty-five inside the Bundesstock, which is the seat of government of Germany. And when they rebuilt the Bundesstock ten years ago, fifty years ago, they took all the stuff that they plastered up and just to hold the building together. And here was all this almost looks brand-new Russian graffiti.
Russian graffiti, wow. Interesting.
Sorry, I gotta talk forever on this.
Interesting.
But you won't have to, if people are interested in hearing.
I brought invitations.
Okay.
But I don't have enough.
You could pass one around.
Well, here, I got enough, you guys can get around six.
Last shoe.
Here, around five.
I don't need one.
You don't have one, okay, you don't, you need one.
I do, thank you.
You need one.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Don, we're planning, we're going to do an full-fashioned slideshow.
Okay. A bit of art, a bit of humor, it says. A bit of architecture, a bit of history. Great, well, thank you for the invitation.
Yes.
And for the picture, that's great. Great, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yeah, I was gonna say top that. That'd be tough to do, okay, thank you, Don. Okay, proclamation. Okay, I have a proclamation here. Very different, I'm going to read for you. This is very appropriate to read. In support of the eleventh annual Read Across Siskiyou event sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission, whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Families Children, Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children, from prenatal to five-years-old of age, will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas, children in Wairika from prenatal to five-years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading and supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas, First Five Siskiyou in partnership with Family, Community, Resource Centers dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy through Read Across Siskiyou by providing the same titled book read by guest readers to children in various preschool, kindergarten, childcare settings, and libraries throughout Siskiyou County on the same day and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. And I, therefore, I Joan Smith Freeman, Mayor of the City of Wairika, hereby proclaim November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, as the eleventh anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou and hereby enthusiastically endorse daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success. So I am proud to say that I am one of the Readers Across Siskiyou and I get to go and read one of the books.
That is very exciting. And there is a slot in here. If you, if anybody else wants to be a reader, you can call and sign up to be a reader.
Great.
So I have the, I have a book in a folder for every council member.
Hello, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is very exciting.
Quick as a cricket. Last year I did The Catwin. Pete the Cat, yes.
Wasn't that a good one?
It was a wonderful book. There were two of them, it was great books.
I love my watch. I love my watch. I love that one too. So when you're old, do you see how important literacy is among the Siskiyou children? Because there is a three-million-word difference gap at age of three between the course and the Wairika families.
Really?
Three-million-word gap at age of three. So with First Five, we want books into every house. And we do this, one book everywhere in the county. But monthly, books go out to the preschools and to other, the family resource centers in Wai- So.
Thank you.
Also, in your blue folder, you will see that there's a-
If you go up to the podium, there's a microphone there and the folks at home can hear you too.
So if you, wow. So in your folder, you will see an application for Dolly Parton. So any family with a, with a child between zero and five can sign up free and their child every month will get a book in the mail until their fifth birthday. Also, you'll see a small form if you want to donate towards that.
Wonderful.
So we appreciate you so much for being part of First Five Read Across Siskiyou
Assets to keep our, our finger on.
Right.
So that's.
You don't keep them running.
It would be a slowly phased in type of, and, and I can't answer how much that would be to phase in this, these three layers and then maybe the next year add another three layers to it. So, asset management is a growing, moving, living, breathing thing, and that's the entire reason for it.
So, when you evaluate these vendors, you're gonna look at some of their other cities that they've done applications for and hopefully, um, find the vendor that has done well in other cities.
Oh, yes, of course. That is the standard methodology behind a RFP interview process. We fully vet everyone. We call all of their references. We talk, you know, I as a public works director called their public works director. Um, Ben Miller, the maintenance and operations manager calls their maintenance and operations manager. We have field workers, talk to field workers, you know, we actually go out and do tours and trips and, and go down if it's, you know, nearby enough where we can send a guy or two down to actually go to the field and see, is it truly working for the city of whoever? Yeah, cause the whole point is to be seamless. Yes?
Um, regarding the input into the system, who does that in the beginning? Because that staffing.
That's part of the, that's part of this initial uploading. Um, when, when we get the R, through the RFP, then this firm would take a look at what we have uploaded already because we have city staff uploading to ArcGIS. And we recently moved that hosting it in the clouds. We have ArcGIS online. So, um, and in the end, we'll actually have field workers uploading in real time. So there's a framework that needs to lay underneath ArcGIS that's in the cloud. This asset management system sits below it. And then all the way down to the, the brand new field worker that's only been here a week is actually uploading real time, honest numbers. And it's calking out how much, how many wages are spent on that job. And it's more in lieu of a work order system, which most folks are familiar with in a factory, there's a piece of paper that chases the part around until it goes into shipping.
Job cost.
In ours, right. In ours, the line of work, it's more dial down. How much does it cost us to operate a hu- a fire hydrant every year? You know, how much does it cost us to operate a section of pipe every year? Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Mostly.
Pretty much everybody from the bottom up, um, with a little bit of heavy lifting. A little bit of heavy lifting from the vendor at the beginning.
It'll be a lot of work, but in the long run, it'll save a lot of work. Well, not only that, save time, but it'll also alert us to any major maintenance that may start again.
Future.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it sounds like a good.
I'll make a motion then that we authorize the city staff to advise, eh, advertise a request for proposal for assets and operation management software and professional services.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, council member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, apologies for being late. That's what happens when you're in court in Redding.
So, in favor say aye.
Representing other people, not, not as, uh.
Not for the city. Did I get the second half of it? All those opposed say aye. Okay, all right. So we can go forward now, but welcome. We're glad you're here and you're safe. As you know, there probably wasn't much grass growing under you. Okay, um, so thank you, Matt, for bringing that to us. And it sounds like a good, um, it sounds like a really good future project. Big future project. Okay, number four, city treasures report discussion, possible action. Approval of treasures monthly cash balances report September twenty eighteen. Budget of revenue and expenditures with year-to-date actuals through September twenty eighteen. Quarterly treasurer's investment report, first quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And quarterly fiscal performance report, first quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Reta?
So we're already to the, uh, we're already four months into the new fiscal year. It's hard to believe. They're still closing out a prior fiscal year. But, um, the, um, treasurer's report, I wanted to, um, go into, um, some questions, maybe if I can, Debbie, on the, um, the banks, the, um, broker statements. And one thing that the broker statements do show, um, and I apologize to the fonts and all. Kind of that trade off of saving paper versus the font, but, um, with that is they always, um, the broker statements always report the market value and the market price on the securities. And what that reflects is what the value, um, with that yield would be priced at in today's market if you were to liquidate that security. And, um, because we've been in an increasing rate environment, we procure, um, these investments, you know, several years ago. Um, basically their market value is negative, is lower, um, than their par value. Meaning you have an unrealized loss on those. Um, it's not a realized loss. It's just saying, um, basically your yield could be better in today's market environment. Um, kind of the flip side of it, if you're a homeowner, it's kind of a, again, think about your lost opportunity. If you have financed two years ago versus financing in today's environment, it's more, um, and the change in rates on that. So, um, just wanted to call that out if you have any questions on that. Again, we hold to maturity, so, um, but that's what that reflects on that, um, for the.
Question on that.
Sure, no.
You don't see any need that you might have to cash in any of them prior to maturity?
No, we're pretty concerned. We're, we're only about a third of our portfolio in there in those. Rest is in liquid securities with life. And actually, I, um, within tightness, Steve, we're going on the maturities. I'm going to take a strategy, a little bit of kind of renewing a little shorter term because the yield curve is so flat between the two-year and the five-year. I don't see a whole lot of benefit for going out for five, um, with that three-year lock when there's just really no yield difference um, between the two-year CD and the five-year. Could get me excited when talking forty basis points. You know, that's not worth thirty-six months of risk, in my opinion. So, um, anyway, the other thing, thanks for bringing that up, is the, um, the, um, treasurer's report, um, shows basically the life, which is your liquid overnight securities. And the, um, the lay field, I think this, um, yield as of nine thirty was, um, two point oh six three as of nine thirty on the lay. And so, you can see there's a lot of movement um, in the rates right now.
It's better.
Yeah, so you kind of see there in the red, the two point oh six three. So you see how fast the short term's moving up. And that's just with the Fed discount, um, interest rate.
So that's good.
Movement over last year. Um, and then I did want to call some attention to the, um, that the, um, what you see in the, um, budget, operating budget of revenue and expenses. I just wanted to mention that, um, even though the fund, um, is called the Crand, Fund oh four. It's called Crandall Stewart, that that cash balance could, um, is combined of both the funds in the Stewart Trust and the Crandall Trust. And so that may come up later in discussion and just wanted to clarify. Um, the Crandall has about a hundred and sixty-five thousand and the Stewart, the balance, remember the Stewart's for the, um, Minor Street, means, um, improvement projects. So, um, and the, um.
So there's only about six thousand left in that?
About sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, sixty-eight thousand. I don't see that.
So it, it's co- combined. That's what I wanted to call out. The, it's combined of both the Stewart and the Crandall in there. And the, um, loans on real property have all been paid off. So that, that is, all funds available are liquid.
So the sixty thousand.
Um, if you go to oh four for two twenty-six, five sixty-nine, fifty-five.
You have to go all the way to your right.
Right, for the current cash balance.
Right, sixty-eight thousand, four sixty-two, ninety-three.
Right there.
That looks like it's under the Wairika Volunteer.
No, way over here.
No, below that. Wairika Volunteer is thirty-four thousand.
Right there.
Two twenty, two twenty-six, five sixty-nine, fifty-five?
Yeah.
Nope. Oh, that's down a fun.
Hundred and sixty-five of that is, what's the Crandall?
Okay.
And the difference is about the Stewart above.
Okay, so just.
Brought those numbers with me. I didn't know it's.
That's why they.
So just by coincidence, then it sounds like it's, it almost matches the Wai- Wairika Volunteer Fire Department Volunteer Fund.
Oh, I see.
Oh, yeah. It's not related at all. Yeah.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
So, um, are there any worries or concerns with, uh, are we on target? I mean, if someone were to just look at this, and I always ask you this, you're gonna miss me?
No.
The, the revenue, the revenue versus expense year-to-date, so obviously, you know, we're not taking in, it looks like, we're not taking in as much as we're spending, but, but this could be because we're on target. Are we on target?
We are. Again, I kind of, um, the only thing that really has any monthly cyclical, cyclical flow is your enterprise funds, governmental funds, um, on the outgo, it's more, more monthly smooth, but our revenue is not.
Thank you.
Because of the property, our revenue comes from property tax. Right now, our sales tax, um, there was, there's a lag on that with the recognition of that and the reversal. So, remember, sales tax, I'm getting lagged information about three months.
Right.
Yeah, well, that was my question. If you look at two different things, the general operating fund, we've got a, you know, large negative six hundred and twenty thousand, but that's because the revenue is just over ten percent. And that's because the property taxes really don't come due till December tenth. And then the gas tax and traffic fund have, uh, very little revenue. I think that's just one month or less than a month of sales tax on it. So you have a very big negative on that because you did a lot of street work in, uh, July, August, September. So that, those are just timing differences that are gonna, uh, play out over the course of the year.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because that's exactly right. When public works is out there and going, man, it starts hitting us July and August, right at the beginning of our fiscal year. And yet we're like, um, I haven't done all the transfers yet either in the new years, um, for the actuals, even though the budget's there. So, one of the, um, I gotta wait for the final, for the close, and then I start doing the transfers in the new year, um, between the funds, because the general fund will be transferring to the street funds. Um, I think we did, um, well, let me look at the transfers in here on this, um, streets. Six hundred and ninety thousand, and I haven't moved that cash yet. Yeah, yeah. Um, and yet the outdoes really happened and even the outgo next year. It takes them, it, it's hard to, even in June, just for you guys to have the tips to really start doing the street work before the summer till almost nearly July, by the time they get it lined out. Um, for a lot of the, uh, big, um, chip cell projects. So, um, who knows with global warming, maybe we might be. Anyway, I was looking, reading a news clip of Venice and the flooding in there. It's just like, amazing, psych topic. Um, so this is going back to the, um, Debbie, again, I think you raised the question of why are there negatives, um, on that when, um, basically we're expecting, remember that the adopted budget represents a full year and the current period represents the year-to-date, which is three months of revenue. Um, again, our revenues, um, lag either one to two months because when the, um, because the state, when they're paying, um, they're always lagging on the payments. So usually I don't get July installments a lot of times till September. So I'll only have one installment on the, so only on sales tax, that's the case. Um, and also on food and money, it lags one month. So, I just wanted to call that out. Again, the expenses and outgo is on track for that. Um, and, um, if there's any other specific questions, as far as this on track, I mean, the year's still developing. Um, I think we will be on track. Sales tax, you know, is still coming in nice and strong for us slowly. Um, which is nice. I, there was a little bit of, and I've got to follow up a little bit on that. When the state, the state, we formed their, um, Board of Equalization and the passing through the taxes into a new entity. And they forgot to include certain vendors in their sales tax estimates for the year-end. And one of those happened to be Walmart. So, um, for us, it's, um.
That's a big one.
Yeah, so, um, there were some big box retailers that were excluded on that, those, um, allocations. So, I, eh, hopefully by the time clothes will, I'll know what the impact of that was. But the BOE really hasn't released numbers on that, the, on those.
The Board of Equalization?
Or, well, their new, whatever they called them.
Entity that we can't remember the name.
Cause we're.
Used to be Board of Equalization.
Yeah.
It's Tax Administration, something like that.
Right, yeah. The Board of Equalization got stripped of most of its, uh, duties as a result of some
Political stuff.
Political problems and some audit problems.
Audit problems.
Yeah.
Interesting. So whatever the new name is.
Whatever the new name is.
They're behind.
They were behi- yeah, they were behind them reporting.
Interesting.
Interesting. So the same people still work for them.
Yeah, well. Naturally. Okay, um, anything else? Reta?
No, though. Most are specific questions that's.
I was just gonna ask that. Are there any questions, um, on the reports? I think Reta did a good job of explaining it. Thank you, Reta. Okay. So do I have a motion to, um, accept possible action approval of?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
To accept the city treasurer's report. And approval of all of the.
Okay, so a motion and a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're down to city manager reports and staff reports.
Mayor, tonight I don't have very much, partly because I spent a scintillating day with insurance training, including an hour with the actuary. Uh, it's always interesting. And, uh, but I did want to mention that one of the things that happened at the state, and you probably have all gotten notes from the league about this, is that the, uh, regulations for the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which used to be bummer if you remember, but. Still include two things that, uh, we objected to in an earlier letter. Uh, those specifically are the, uh, they have a, basically a ten-day period, uh, where they say, hey, is your license okay up there in Wairika there? And if we don't respond to them, they, they give the person the license evidently, which is just nutty. But, uh, the other one, probably, uh, the much more serious one is that they are preempting any, uh, regulation on delivery through the regulation process. We frankly believe that's illegal. It's not provided for in the proposition. And so we will be preparing for the mayor's signature a, a second letter to emphasize that fact along with probably most of the rest of the league, uh, people that are not just, it, it's interesting. It not only takes the delivery regulations off of places like here where we're not allowing it. It also removes the restrictions evidently from cities that are allowing cannabis deliveries now, but regulate it. It seems, it seems like it'll strip both of those, the way that the regulations are written, so.
Interesting.
Doesn't make any sense whatsoever to us, so. Um, but anyway, we may end up having to, uh, deal with that or, or watch and see if there's a lawsuit. So I just wanted to mention that, so just so you know, that yet another letter will go down into the, the ballots of Sacramento.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Seems like to me that's a potential lawsuit that's gonna go to the California Supreme Court to decide.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I think, I think you're probably right.
Interesting.
That's all I had, unless you wanted me to give some reports on some of the things I learned at the insurance.
Uh, no.
As exciting as that might be.
As long as you save us money and provide better coverage, we're fine.
Yes.
And the, the other, the other part of, uh, we're doing all that.
Well, of course you are.
Uh, but the other part of it is to also, uh, limit claims by better, um, training. And some policy student, mostly better training as well, that we talked about today.
Okay, okay. Any questions? No? Okay, uh, let's see. Who wants to go first?
I'm a muzzle. Uh, a couple of things. We, uh, we're gonna be having, uh, our next Siski homelessness coalition meeting. We'll be talking about the PIT, the point in time for them this year, so we'll need to emphasize on that. And I can always use volunteers to go out and help count, um, when it comes to that point in time, which is January twenty-second and twenty-third of the week of. Um, we also, I see, and I was gonna ask the mayor about this. We heard anymore about the tiny home grant application. Did you hear anymore about that?
Is that the heap? No, they're in the process of reviewing those grants, I believe, aren't they?
Yes, I don't expect that we will hear anything about that until, uh, sometime early next year.
Oh, okay. Before we hear anymore about that, that was through the county, though, ICU, that's correct.
It's actually through the continuum of care, which incorporates not just Siski, but I don't remember having.
Like ten, ten, eleven counties, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we probably won't hear anymore about that till later, huh?
Correct.
Now, in, in conjunction to that, I was gonna ask, do we have anything in place for us as a city for zoning-wise? So if they do accept that tiny home and tiny home application is done, the money's going through, do we have a place for that?
I do not know where they're going to place it.
Okay.
The, um, and it depends too on what it is. Homeless shelters?
Well, this is tiny homes.
Right, homeless shelters are, uh, right, it'd have to be in the M-one zone.
Right.
Uh, it depends on what the tiny houses look like, whether that's a shelter or transition ones.
That's, I guess, my question is, if we don't really have anything in place, I think that's something we need to, you and I, talk about in the future.
I, we need to see what the proposal is first, to know whether it's already covered or not.
Yeah, that'd be good, cause I think, you know, we need to be prepared for that, if that funding does go through, to make sure we do have a place for it. There's a good chance that will be positioned in Wairika anyways versus in the other place.
Well, and you know, the county has a piece of property, uh, foothill, so you never know where it might go.
Oh, good point.
They have a piece of property, but we obviously might have to make sure it's zoned property.
Good point.
That's what I'm getting at.
So you mean that the, the, oh, yeah, okay.
Let's see, uh, what else do I have in here going on?
I was where the jail was gonna go. It's probably okay.
One other thing, I was, we're, we discussed a year, a while back about a traffic study. Are we gonna go any further on the traffic study? Cause I know there's a bunch of places we've discussed. I know we've, um, we've brought forward too, a lot of citizens have brought forward this, you know, being down to, you know, four H Lane to campus, campus ranch, Main Street, um, in front of Valero. We just had an accident last week, again, on that, which I know is state, but that's still part of the city. And then a number of times it's been bought up as far as Brew Street in Oregon, going up to the hospital. So what's our next step on doing a traffic study? What do we need to do to?
So, um, what, what I'm, I'm going to recommend is that we do a couple of things. Some of those are in the process of being reviewed by the, um, by traffic engineer.
The traffic, what, isn't there a group that specifically does that?
Well, we call it the Traffic Committee, which is essentially the Public Works Director and the Police Chief with the input from the traffic engineer. Cause that's, that's where that comes from. But I think that given, there's some, uh, I'm not sure what to call them. Misconceptions may not be the right word, but traffic, and if you wanna jump in, you can. The traffic is, uh, is very interesting when you go through it and look at the logic of where you put stop signs in, where you don't.
Right.
Why, and all that sort of thing. And there are some of the locations that we probably will not have a traffic engineer look at because on the face of it, there shouldn't, it shouldn't even be considered, so.
Okay, so who makes that decision?
The Traffic Committee.
Okay, and who's part of that, then? Who got?
They just mentioned it's the Police Chief, Public Works Director, and they consult with the Traffic Engineer.
Who's that?
The Traffic Engineer, Lester Pace.
Lester Pace, okay.
Yeah.
So, we don't have any say whatsoever on any of this? It just gets thrown out in the limbo and nothing ever gets done about it?
Let us bring you back some information on that.
Cause I mean, it's been discussed numerous times. We've had citizens come.
Can we get back to you on that, sir?
Mm-hmm. Like, like something in the future being brought back, so we can, we keep bringing this back up and talking about it and nothing ever gets done about it, so.
If I may, just to clarify a little bit, when I was first promoted from crew to the Maintenance and Operations Manager position, one of the first things I did was, I said, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna find a way to get stop signs, four-way stop, put at South Oregon and Grantwood. Cause I had seen so many wrecks there, I thought this is dangerous. And then when I saw the, the transit station, the stage going to build there, and I watched it be built, and I watched tractor supply be built. And if any of you have ever driven down that road in the middle of the day and tried to get back on Main, and it's just, it seems completely ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, I went through where you are now. How do, how do we get this to happen? And I went to the, to Daryl Hook at the time. He was just on his way out to retire. And I said, Daryl, before you go, if you'd pull me a solid and run me a traffic study down there, because I, I really think it deserves a four-way stop. And he pulled the warrants on that intersection and ran the counts. We laid the tubes, we counted the speeds, and even that intersection doesn't legally warrant a four-way stop.
Wow.
So Steve spoke to some public misconceptions of needs for four ways. And I know, I'm with you. I, I was out there in the streets, so I don't get out as much as I used to, but, um, you know, you think, you talk about Oregon Street at Minor. There's a, there's an idea that that needs a four-way stop. And when, when you pull the traffic warrants and you look at the number of wrecks and the number, it's, it's some pretty crazy math. You know, cause they're, they're looking for fatalities. They're not looking for fender benders. So, you know, a lot of the wrecks that we've had, we haven't had because it's Main Street. Caltrans had something going on down there, Overland and Main there for a year. Cars were getting knocked over on their sides. And there were Caltrans engineers standing out there with clickers, counting cars and watching speeds and all that. Um, it's, it's that type of thing where even most of those weren't fatality wrecks, so it's not going to alter the traffic law. So it's a dance.
Right. So what about, I guess, another big one, it's like in front of Valero. I mean, there's been people who got hit there numerous times, um, crosswalking there. Uh, what is, so what does it take? Like Ashland has crosswalks that are lit up, you know, they got basically a light showing that somebody's in the crosswalk. Cause this is, that's, this is a common problem now in Valero. I, like I said, I've seen numerous wrecks. I've probably seen hundreds of wrecks in, in front of Valero right there in Brew Street area.
Hundreds?
Yeah, I probably have.
Over his lifetime.
Yeah.
Over his lifetime, not over the last two weeks.
That being.
Two weeks, no.
That being.
There was one last, just last week, there was a wreck.
Yeah, there was.
So that being a state highway, it's under the purview of Caltrans to take care of that. I mean, while it is Main Street.
Main Street, State Route three.
So it's there right away from back of curb to back of curb. Anything that happens on that street falls underneath Caltrans regulations.
Say that when I was on the Local Transportation Commission, um, I brought that up too. I said, Ashland has these, I mean, it's just, it seems like so obvious. You press a button and then all the lights are flashing and people realize it, cause it's, I mean, you look at that and you know for sure someone's gonna get wiped out. And it's like, we didn't even have to have that tragedy because people are slowing down and, and other people are like, wow, the, what are these guys slowing down for? And they'll just go right around them and they're gonna, they're gonna knock someone out, and take someone out. And they basically said exactly what Matt said, which is, um, I mean, it's pretty sad.
You have to follow the law.
Well, no, no, they don't say that. They, they go by.
Fatalities.
Yeah, they go by fatalities and it's, and it's.
Sad, it's brutal.
I mean, I, I guess, I guess the reason why is because if we had, if they had more money than they knew what to do with, they probably wouldn't. But I'm as, I'm making an assumption, and that could be bad, that they just don't have the money. If they have the money and they don't know what to do with it and they're still going by fatalities, that is incorrect. That is way incorrect. But if they, if they only have a limited budget and they can only apply it to certain things and, and they're not even applying it to all of the fatal intersections, I don't, I don't like that, but I can accept that. But the real question is, it, are they, are they doing it because they're limited based on the funding that they have to where they can't address all of the fatality, uh, as intersections? Or are they limiting it because they're based on an old formula which they no longer need to apply? That's the real question to ask. And that's, that's the local.
LTC, Local Transportation Commission, right. And we've had a lot of discussions about that. And so, yeah, there are some things that are behind the times that they're trying to bring up. And it's probably going to be worked on when Caltrans, part of my report, does all of Main Street from the south end of town all the way to the north end of town in twenty, twenty, two, twenty-three, I think. It's gonna take a, a while to get it done.
I have been in talks just recently again with Caltrans, um, and I believe you, actually, you were at the last meeting that I, that I attended. Um, and we were talking about pedestrian signalization. Pedestrian, um, what do they call it? The, the island in the middle.
Around about that go.
Well, no, halfway. You get halfway across.
Oh, the island.
Like we have at the, at the Y.
The island, they call it a protected zone, right.
So, you know, we're, we're speaking to all of that, and you will hear from me about that again as this Caltrans project progresses.
Right.
Um, just remember that every one of those that the city decides that they want, we're going to pay for.
We have to pay.
Caltrans is not going to install that on that project just because we asked them to.
But it's worth saving a life.
But the conversation is open.
To me, I don't care what it costs.
I just wanted you to know, the conversation is open between myself. I just wanted you to know, the conversation is open between myself and Caltrans right now about all of that, and so you'll see numbers and you'll see some data.
The other consideration is if they're building that, if they could structure it in such a way to where, even if they don't have the money now, if they've got the, the pipe or whatever, whatever is required.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, and so that, you know, to allow for maybe a potential later on.
Correct, we're talking about that, and we're talking about irrigation pipes for future planters, we're talking about.
Right.
It's a full streetscape, tip to tip.
The whole big story, yeah, it's a big, big project.
You'll hear more from me and staff reports in coming meetings.
Okay, so, uh, Dwayne, are you finished with your report?
Yeah.
With all the help and everything?
I had a big discussion of that one.
Yeah, it's good, all right. Okay, are you done? Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Barchego.
Um, I was very pleased to attend the, uh, the meeting for Ringy Pool, and, uh, and that had a, a large, uh, in fact, I was, I was surprised, there were, there were barely enough chairs around that, we was in the new stage building, stage conference room, which is very nice, and, uh, um, the number of people representing their respective interest groups was, well, actually pleasantly and surprising and astounding to me.
Particularly, we had twenty-two people there, right?
Well, and some, some were redundant, I mean, like the Y, I think, might have had two board members, possibly three.
Two, no, just two.
Um, I know Rain Rock Casino had, uh, had two, um, but even, even that, I'm just.
Actually, Rain Rock had one and a Caruth Tribe had one.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Oh, tricky. Okay, so, uh, so it was, it was just very, uh, I was, uh, I was very happy to see that because that indicates to me that there's a, there's gonna be future momentum with that, and we're gonna keep a pool, I hope, in the city, and we'll have all of these stakeholders involved. So I was very, very encouraged, and that was a happy moment. I'm gonna leave it on a happy note.
That sounds good. Okay, Councilmember Shaski.
Okay, I wanted to go to the Ringy Pool workshop, but I had to be out of town three days in a tax class up near Portland, and this new tax law is clear as mud in some cases. It's a lot of it's gonna end up in the Supreme Court three to five years from now to decide exactly what the law's supposed to mean because they rushed it through so quickly, and.
You might only have to live with it.
Yeah. Um, I did meet with the California Public Utilities Commission, um, local government representative recently, and I mentioned stuff about the smart meter installation and the possible double billing of customers, if they're gonna be paying an extra fee for the smart feeders when they're already getting charged for the meter reading and the bundled thing, so they are looking at that. Yes, another, um, thing I'd like to see us look at is the City of Weed renegotiated their, um, franchise agreement with Pacific Power and were able to raise the rate from one percent to two and a half percent, and it's gonna mean an additional hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to the City of Weed.
Ooh.
So I think we need our city attorney to look at our franchise agreement with Pacific Power and see, 'cause supposedly they're way outdated and old, so we need to make sure that we get the best deal for the city, and it also could be used as a bargaining chip in our negotiations with Pacific Power over the water line. So I think it's something that we need to look at.
We can take a look at it, Weed used our, uh, franchise agreement to up theirs.
Oh, really? So ours is already up?
I, I, I'll have to go back and look at it.
Yeah.
We always wanna compare it, make sure we're up there.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's what I have.
Okay, great. Councilmember Bayer.
Well, I've just been lollygagging the last couple of weeks, but I did go to the CPC, CPUC meeting in Weed this week.
I didn't see you.
I was in the back.
Oh, I was in the front.
She was in the front row.
Hmm.
But, uh, it was really informative, and I hope that the judge left the, um, meeting recognizing the concerns of the community, because it's hard to tell when they, you know, are kind of expressionless and, and don't say anything encouraging, like, "I understand your point of view" or anything, he just kinda listened and took names, but, um, I'm glad I went, it was a packed house, and one of the people there mentioned, um, questioned why it wasn't, the meeting wasn't held in Wairika, and, uh, he didn't really give a answer, he just passed it off that other people made the arrangements, basically.
I think they were trying to do something between Mount Shasta and Weed, but they didn't exactly say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but, anyway, I hope everyone's getting out there enjoying the beautiful fall weather, but other than that, I, I didn't write notes on what I've done and it's kind of all a blur.
But it's been busy, right?
It's been busy, it's been busy. Oh, I went to the meeting, the Ringy Pool meeting also. See, it keeps coming back.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, um, yes, I, I attended the, oh, well, let's start with a positive. Okay, I attended the Ringy Pool meeting, in fact, I helped set up the Ringy Pool stakeholders' discussion meeting after attending a meeting with, uh, with Splash, with the Splash Board, and, uh, we wanted to put together a meeting where we could have more discussion and have more stakeholders there, other than just the city and just Splash. Uh, and boy, was, it was well-attended, we had people from local schools, we had the college president there, as well as the campus director up here, and we had, as we said, we had the tribe and we had the casino, and we had, we had candidates there, I know that Catherine was there, and Corey was there, and I.
Splash representatives.
And you, and Splash, pardon? Splash representatives were there, yes, and YMCA was there. We had about twenty-two, twenty-three people there, and, yeah, Dwayne was there too.
High school was there, which is important, I think.
The, the high school is there, and, um, importantly, the athletic directors from all the schools were there, which is good, um, as well as, um, as the YMCA, because the YMCA talked about their reasoning for not putting in a pool. But, uh, I think everyone there was pleased to see that there were enough people there that we could all work it out, we could find a way to work it out for the good of the community, that's the main thing. Um, we've scheduled a second meeting, uh, in November, seems like it was the twenty-seventh, Steve?
Yes, it sounds right.
And Matt was there.
I know it's that week, so.
And Matt was there and Cindy was there. Cindy, you're up there, thank you for helping to set that up, and you too, I know that, Matt, you personally went down there and set up tables and chairs, so thank you for doing that. Um, I think it went really well, I was very, very pleased. Uh, we had to wait, of course, until we had got our assessment, and by the way, if you haven't seen the assessment, I, I, I got one of, uh, one of Matt's, you can have it back if you need it, but this is the full assessment, this is the full assessment. Once we got that, then we could go forward, but not until that time, so I was glad they worked on that all summer. Also, I had a Siski Local Transportation Commission meeting, um, and, and Caltrans was there, and, uh, Matt, no, Matt and Steve didn't show up for that, that was a meeting prior to it. Uh, and we did talk about, um, the funding that's coming in, however, you should all know that if Prop Six does go through, that, uh, we will, our budget will be decimated for roads within our county, um, and I'm just only hoping that we won't have to pay back anything, because, uh, Prop One, SB One, actually gave us the funding for roads, because it had gone down to nearly nothing, then Prop One passed, and then if, uh, excuse me, SB One passed, if Prop One, if Prop Six goes through and it passes, um, we're gonna be looking at some serious consequences, um, in our area, not just in Wairika, but all of the cities throughout, I think, 'cause it's gonna, it, yeah. Another thing that, um, I've had meetings on, I've been involved in, is called the Rural Cities, uh, Working Group, and so, uh, we've got, uh, six, eight regions, sixteen regions, I'm trying to remember, Steve, how many divisions within the state of California represented?
Sixteen, there's sixteen divisions.
And we have eight.
California cities and we have eight.
Okay, so we have eight divisions throughout the state, not just in our area, uh, that want to become involved in this, so Kathy Mortar and I and Jesse Lauren from Willows have been working really hard on this for a long time, about a year since the last meeting, and so it's going forward, we're having phone teleconference meetings, and that's going really well, um, uh, in that a lot of people wanna be involved in it. Um, also, the CPUC meeting in Weed, I did go to the meeting as well, did not see Debbie. See, we don't just visit when we go to meetings, we don't even know each other's there, um, but.
I'm stuck, like.
It was an interesting meeting, um, a lot of the people that spoke talked about the opt-out fee, and that was not what the meeting was about, the meeting was about raising the fees, uh, Pacific Power has petitioned the PUC, CPUC, to raise their fees, by how much, Steve?
Two.
And Weed, right before the meeting, he had met with you and Steve, I believe, um, and they are listening. I was pleased to see that not only was the judge, what do they call him, the presiding judge that was there, not only was he there, but there was, um, a woman that was, um, brought in by the, the magic of technology, uh, from, I think, the San Francisco area, and she was representing one of the PUC, um, elected or appointed members, and when they found out, uh, but when they discussed during the meeting, uh, when people that testified talked about the double billing, she definitely said that they were going to look into that, and if that's the case, they're going to do something about it. So that was one good thing that came out of it. There were people there from Mount Shasta, Lake Shastina, Weed, Wairika, uh, and, and I didn't hear one single person there that said, "Yes, bill us more money." Give us a higher bill, they didn't. Um, in fact, Barry Olin was there, and Carol Cupp came directly from a College of the Siski Trustee meeting, and they said that the raise in cost was going to cost the College of the Siski's about eighty thousand dollars a year, which they said would cut out one professor. So I thought that was, and what I'd like to do with, you know, with the permission of the rest of the councils, I would like to ask staff to research how much more money it will cost the City of Wairika and what the impacts to us will be, and then I'd like to write a letter to the PUC, uh, letting them know what those impacts will be. We have a, we have a little bit of time to do it, I have the, I have the form, which I will share with you.
Sure.
And, uh, the, the address that we can send it to, but if, if all of you are okay with that, we can send a letter around and make sure you look at it.
We're going to make an assumption that it would be that rate, the one point nine percent.
Right.
It may be slightly different than that because of the tariff schedule and some of our larger facilities like the, the pumping plant and the, um, water, water, wastewater treatment plant may not have, it may not be exact is what, but it'll be close.
So, uh, yeah, yeah, we can give them an approximate, but I think that it's important for us to weigh in on it.
Okay.
Debbie and I and the mayor of Fort Jones were the only three officials, uh, elected officials there, the rest were all some really upset citizens, and it was, wasn't a very happy meeting, but I thought it was important to go and witness it.
Some of them spoke very eloquently, I thought.
They did.
Richard Marshall did a great job, um, there was Rex Kazolio, I thought his was an informed, it, it goes over a lot better if your, um, statement is precise and not emotional, uh, and it's hard to maintain that because you feel like nobody's listening and paying attention to you, but it really does make a, a bigger impact if they feel like you're controlled and you did your research.
Well, not only that, you need to state exactly what your wishes are, in other words, instead of just complaining to say, to say, "Okay, I am opposed to this proposal because," and then list the reasons why, because if you, if you ramble, then, and, ramble and then not say exactly what, you know, what it is that you want, then it's pretty hard for them to do. Uh, but, it's not too late, so people can write to the CPUC and, uh, let them know if you love what they're doing, or not what they're doing, but what the proposal is, or if you are opposed to it and why. Um, so I would encourage people to do that. Uh, Rural Cities Working, LTC, um, also, uh, as the president of, uh, our division for the League of California Cities, it is my honor to be able to appoint people to policy committees, and so I put in a few names, local names here, um, I've been on the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee for a few years now, uh, and it's a huge committee, there must be sixty or seventy people that sit in a big room on that. Um, there's also a committee called, uh, Revenue and Taxation, and so I talked to our mayor, Pro Tim, to see if she would like to sit on that committee, because you are on the, um, on the budget and.
Finance committee.
Finance committee, yeah, the finance committee, right. Uh, and I talked to, uh, to Norm about it too, because there are two members on that, and Debbie accepted, so thank you, Debbie.
I did, unless Norm would like.
Okay, turned us down flat. He said he's too busy, uh, but he did think about it about two seconds or, anyway, and then Steve also, I put your name down for the Public Works Committee. Uh, you've been on that before, you know.
Oh, was I supposed to say thank you? I'm so sorry, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Is that, thank you for more work?
Bad men.
Thank you for more work, but the good news is, is that by having the representation on there, we actually have input as to what happens at the state level. That's the main thing, to realize that we now have three policy committees covered, and the League of California Cities has advocates that go over to the state capitol every day to talk about the impacts to our areas, when we tell them, you know, what the impacts are and what our needs are. So I think that now we have, you know, three times more, um, more input that we can get, so I'm looking forward to that, and I think that's all, I'm sure there's more, but I can't think of any more, but vote early and vote often.
Yeah.
That's right.
Uh, yeah, next Tuesday, yes, is, is, uh, election day, and Councilmember Barchego has elected not to vote, not to vote, not, he's voting, he's voting, but he's not coming back. So, we'll miss you.
When is your last day, sir?
So, so the way this works is the, is the county clerk has to certify the election.